Good evening, I'd like to open the Deerfield Planning Board meeting, November 4th, 2019, at 7 o'clock on this lovely Monday night here at the Deerfield Town Hall. Our agenda is to review some minutes of previous meetings, review the mail, take some public comment if there's any. And then, on the agenda, we have some old business, which is about Old Deerfield III Solar Project. And then we'll have some discussion or review of zoning bylaws for current relevance and/or clarification. And then we'll have a discussion, continued a discussion, about the planning board function, members' responsibilities, communication, general operations, assistance and funding, and that includes connection to the town staff. Then, any other business not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours prior to the posting of this meeting? We'll set a date for the next meeting and adjourn. Any comments on this? So I was informed soon after this was posted last week that the Old Deerfield III Solar Project folks are not gonna...
Change?
...be here tonight.
So that was supposed to be a public hearing?
And if you remember, there was, we had said at the last meeting that we had said we could have a public hearing if they wanted it, but remember, they were up, they said we're not sure we wanna go through with it? So...
Well, I did, I was in contact with them. And they contacted me, and at first they said they wanted to go forward with this, so I contacted Diana. The next day he called me back and said that some of the preliminary information they got from Eversource wasn't current, so they wanted to take time and get Eversource on board. They were going to change the way they were going to lay their power lines.
Right.
So, they said they wouldn't be ready for this time, so we never did post it.
Alright. So that's a change to this agenda, any other, anything else?
So, they may or may not come back to us, they may or may not...
They will come back, but they just weren't going to be ready for this meeting.
And we do have a quorum. You wanna say who we are, 'cause I don't get the name tags out tonight, so...
Anne Mary Cludier.
Rachel Blaine.
John Waite.
Kip Kamosa.
Paul Alice.
Roger Sadowski.
And then one absent, Max, Max Antis. I'll take this opportunity to invite, to introduce, anyway, a visitor we have who's staying with me, and he's working with me at the Franklin County CDC. Ahab Jabarine, yeah? From Israel, and he's on a US fellowship. He's here for six weeks in the United States. So he was in Boston for the past two weeks, he's out in Franklin County for two weeks, so, learning about small business stuff, but also public policy and how towns work. So I thought, come to a planning board meeting.
Nothing better.
Welcome. Alright, so we have an agenda, so we have a, some minutes. So before we review, actually, I should take public comment. Does there anybody have any public comment that's about something that's not on the agenda tonight? Chris.
Well, I was gonna just check in with your concern with zoning, but it sounds like you're gonna get to that.
I think that, I think your urge will come up as we, since we don't have the solar, we're gonna talk more about zoning bylaws, so we'll get to...
I'll wait for that.
Alright. Alright, so then, some minutes. So what I wanted to say about the minutes is that, the, if you remember, we're talking about town staff, and that we need more help here, and so Diana had someone, do you know, remember his name?
Alex, that kid from the, the...
Alright. He's like an intern, or he's helping, he's kinda doing some projects for the town. So he actually listened to the tapes from this meeting, and did some minutes, and they were very thorough. You saw them, eight pages, I think?
Yeah, sixty-eight pages.
Which is much different than what we usually do, and it was actually really recording dialogue and everything.
Yeah, just...
But the reason why, so I talked to Diana, the reason why they talked about that, and they've talked to our attorney also, is because when we come to making a decision, that, that sometimes in our discussion, we're coming up with like conditions and all those things, so they kinda thought it was important. Whereas for us, we have shorter minutes, and then when we get to the decision, we try to put things into the decision itself, the conditions that we set. So it seemed like there was two different ways to take minutes to tell the truth.
Yeah, the thing I noticed, that the votes weren't all in there, that not every, that this complete as he had it, didn't show up with the votes in there for some reason, so there's a couple of other things that...
So I consider that was like a...
Trial.
A trial, and I think, we send it out to everybody, but I think we should vote on these minutes, these are the minutes that we're used to and that we're using.
But the other is...
But the other is, and the other thing is that, basically, I said, there's, you know, as volunteers, and Paul's not gonna take verbatim on this thing, and you're not gonna sit for a couple of hours with the tape. So if we do get more staff help, then maybe we can change the way we do minutes, and maybe have them more thorough. But until then, I think this is what we're gonna get. But Diana and others at the town are still trying to look for some support for us from that office, so. Alright, so let's go over...
And it's a good opportunity for us to thank Paul for this work, too. This is a goo, good, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I think we don't...
We don't say that, all of a sudden.
We don't say that enough, so, thank you, thank you for the...
Six thumbs up.
Okay.
Six...
Six thumbs up. What do they call those cats with six, no?
Where's the...
I know, okay. Let's just review the minutes and vote on it. (laughing) I got a question.
Well, let me say that, what I did is, I read through that whole thing with the six, eight pages.
Yeah.
And I pulled out this section right here. So if we have any questions on that...
About the conditions?
About four conditions.
Well, this whole thing, starting with Rachel Blaine, made, yeah, from there down, that's all from his, his stuff there, so I assumed that somewhere he got that information. I need to make sure it's correct, though.
Yeah, thank you, I think that that was the...
That's what I had.
Yeah. Those four.
Okay. Well, good, the three, the four, the four points were what I had.
Yep.
But the top part is what, what I didn't have.
Oh, I see. Right, so it's a little more...
And that's just more detail.
So it's...
That will help in writing the decision.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So there's that, and then, then also here on this, on this section here at the top of the page, I took that out of his thing there, we can, you know, just make sure that it looked, it looked okay to me, but...
That's where I had a problem, the Old Deerfield III Solar Project?
Yeah.
That sentence is just, I think, it wants to move the location of the connection to Eversource. Right? It's like a funny sentence.
They wanted to, they wanted to move it up to another road that's...
No, but it just, the sentence...
I'm sorry, what's that?
I'm correcting the sentence.
Okay, what is it, what needs to be corrected?
Wants to move the location of the connection to Eversource. It just says, wants to move the Eversource. What does that mean?
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, move Eversource connection.
Sure.
Yeah, gotcha, yep. I'll look and see if that was...
And it's, I'm not sure, it's to a more under, to a more direct, I'm not sure either, it's, that's correct either.
Well, I think he said that at the, at the meeting.
It was, it's a shorter road, yeah.
Was it, the meters have to be on the property that...
That was the problem.
...a solar field is on, that's what the issue was.
And resources.
Yeah, and I, and I drove up there, and I had a question on that, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but it sounds like the cables go underground to that point, then they come up to four telephone poles and put whatever they gotta do on, and then go back underground, so, so that, I'm not sure why they have to come up to four poles after being underground everywhere else. I was just, I didn't get to ask them that, 'cause I didn't look and look at it ahead of time.
Well, that's why we're gonna, we might have a public hearing, so we don't need to worry about that.
Yeah, okay, alright, just something, just something that...
So I would just make that, so it just says, it wants to move the Eversource connection, period. Can we just say that?
Yep.
Because the rest of it seems, yeah, it seems...
Why, it's...
We're not totally sure about it, and it's not really relevant, so...
Okay. Take that out.
Alright, otherwise it looks good, do we have a motion to? Chris Chamberlain's name is spelt wrong in the first section under "yes".
In where, in "yes"?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, A, A-I-N?
A-I-N.
A-I-N. What's that?
And.
Chamberland.
Chamberland, okay.
But then spelled wrong both places.
Yes, it's spelled wrong.
It'll be spelled, it'll be spelled wrong everywhere, I'll change it everywhere else.
Alright, I move to approve the minutes of October 7th, 2019.
Second.
As noted with corrections.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? And, oh, sorry, actually, if you put Anne Mary's last name up in the present, would be good, too.
Where's that?
Anne Mary.
She's present, but it seems like the rest of us got a second. You only get two, you only get two words, Anne Mary.
Yes, sorry.
Make quick.
Yeah, and I, and I also found, Anne, I'm sorry, but down at the bottom, there was a hyphen in there for some reason, and I took it out.
That's my name, I have a hyphen.
I'll take that out.
Nope, that's my name, I have a hyphen.
Oh, so you do want, so it's in there.
So a hyphen should be there, okay.
Anne Mary.
I have a hyphen.
There you go. So she only has one word.
Okay, sir, well, let me put hyphens in all these places. I just took them all out, because I thought they weren't supposed to be there.
Nope.
Details.
Details, details.
Gotta get it right.
Okay, there's more places somewhere, I'll get it, here or there. Okay, alright.
Alright, so moving right along, so as I, as we said, there's no public hearing tonight, there's no discussion about solar project, so we wanna talk about potential zoning bylaw changes. And Chris Curtis is here, and we've had some emails, so, Chris, could you come up and explain some of the ways you might be able to help us? So this was, this is, we've talked about this in the past, in that the town is obviously short-staffed right now, but we need to move forward on some things. So, Chris, who has planning experience and is from the town, so could you just help, have you been hired, or just help explain, I'm not sure I got it all?
So Diana Schindler approached me and asked if I might be able to help you with specific types of assistance, they have a modest amount of funds available. And I don't have a contract yet, that's why I kind of came tonight, was to see if we could, you know, go through a list of things that might be your priorities and talk about that. But just to be clear, what I think Diana's thinking is she's gonna try to get you some additional support, as well as, you know, having me be involved with, with working on bylaws with you.
Right.
I know you need also kind of day-to-day support, and someone to come to meetings and so forth, that, that person wouldn't be me, but it would be someone that, else that she finds to, to help out as well.
And then that, just a quick update on that, is that they, they have applicants for, it's kind of a revised job description of what Priscilla had. And again, I don't know what the timeframe is, but they're working on getting that position, and that person would have some hours for more of the day-to-day stuff for us.
Right. So what Diana talked to me about was, you know, working with you to try to help craft and adopt essentially maybe three to four bylaws that might be your top priorities, so that you could be sort of moving forward with doing some actual planning for the town in addition to all of the permitting and processing of development that you have to do on a, you know, regular basis. And I said I would, you know, be happy to, to try to do that. So in order to kind of craft a scope of work and get something under contract, so I can actually start helping you, I wanted to, you know, if we could, spend just a couple of minutes thinking through, you know, what your list of top priorities might be in that regard. The other thing I should tell you is that, and you may know this already, I'm already working with the Select Board on MVP, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, and so we have a pretty sizable grant that we're working on right now, that we're just kind of getting up to speed, and hiring other consultants, engineers and so forth, to work on things like culvert replacement and green infrastructure in the town center. And then I'm writing another big MVP grant that's due in, in ten days. So I'm gonna be pretty straight out for the next, you know, week and a half or so, but then hopefully by that time we'll be able to get a contract started, and we can, I can start working on some of these other things. So...
Not to interrupt, but does that MVP, does that include some of the floodplain work that, or are they looking at those bylaws, or they want us to think about that, because we did a lot of that work?
There is, we are gonna plug in some, some bylaw work, but the floodplain stuff is essentially already, already sort of been paid for by MVP.
Yeah.
So that would, you know, the implementation of the floodplain bylaw that we still obviously need to adopt...
Yes.
Would be one of the things that I thought might be on the list for, sort of, we'll call it the planning board contract, I guess.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So it would be still part of our, it's our, it's our proposal that's going to be part of it, sure.
Right, yeah. But just to give you a quick sense, what we're thinking about for the new MVP grant is kind of going through a comprehensive review of the town's zoning and other bylaws to look at climate resiliency issues, and generally how to promote that, you know, in various ways. So, you know, encouraging, you know, tree planting, for example, and, you know, in new developments as to the extent that we can, or encouraging energy-efficient development in buildings and so forth in the town. And, you know, anything in, in the way of resilience that we can kind of think about. And then I think we can still get perhaps some money to work on the site plan review revisions that we started working on, you'll recall, which were kind of the green development performance standards. I think we, we could plug in a small component in, in the MVP grant for that. Now, again, we don't know if we're gonna get that grant or not, but I just wanted to give you kind of heads up that that's...
Are those state grants?
I'm sorry?
Is those state grants?
They are state grants from Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. So on this one, we probably won't know until January if we get it or not.
Alright, well that's good, so let's, so we've, over the last several months, we've developed a list of bylaw, either improvements or changes we wanna make.
Okay.
So let's, let's talk about them, and maybe then start to prioritize them, and see what we need help with.
Where's that list?
Well, I'm looking at the, from our September agenda, actually, we said that regarding possible changes to bylaws relative to marijuana establishments, solar electric installations, a lot of that had to do with that size thing, lot size and shape restrictions, and accessory apartments.
Yep.
So those were, those have been hanging around, accessory apartments hanging around for a long time, marijuana, because we've learned things over the past year or two.
Oh, we haven't touched on that.
Same with solar, I guess, yeah.
And then lot size, because we've had these couple of really funky ones that we wanna maybe just look at that and say, or, what was the most recent one, Roger? What was the one that we had that was, where the lots just, you know, the frontage, we get the hour glass or the L-shaped ones?
Oh, flag lots?
Flag lots, yeah. So we've just had a few of those, we wanna just look and see...
Yeah, but I think it was, we tried to, angles could only be a certain, you know, it couldn't be real tight, so to do that, and stuff like that.
Right. I mean, we may not...
And we adopted those already, so we wouldn't end up with those.
But we've ended up with a couple just recently, one being Pioneer Gardens.
Well, well then, then it's a matter of, I think it goes to the next step of, what do you count when you're counting impervious surface?
For instance?
Like on a flag lot, can you count, like the part that's beyond that?
Supposedly we don't have flag lots in town. You have to have so much frontage, a flag lot in my mind is like fifty foot, and then so many acres in the back.
I, I, I don't think we do, but we have had a couple where that we've been challenged by that, where...
Well, I know that one's...
Well, anyway, right now, we don't need to get into details, we wanna get on the table what are, what the highlights, what the priorities are. So, so I just named those four, are there others?
Well, also the flood...
Floodplain.
Adopting the floodplain.
And then, okay.
Because we had, on that one, I believe the public hearing that we had was on June 25th.
Mm-hmm.
And so the six-month clock on that, you know, runs out in December, and...
Six months to get it to...
To town meeting.
To town meeting, oh, okay.
Yeah. So if we don't, if we don't get it to town meeting in December, or by the end of December, then we have to have another public hearing, which...
This isn't the worst thing, it's not the worst. I mean, we have, we have the structure, although we have the bones, it's not like...
Yes. And there is no town meeting?
Well, that's it, no, no, not particularly.
Coming up?
Unless, unless there was a special, I guess, but...
Right. And the other thing that we had talked about was the wording by special permit, and where that is in the zoning bylaws. You and I had just talked about that, and Paul, recently.
I know. Remind us a little bit more about that.
That there are lot sizes running up and down, five and 10, that are zoned for specific size buildings by special permit.
Oh.
And so that has been problematic sometimes, and so we were thinking about looking at where that language is, and where it doesn't belong.
So that gets back, basically back to the use table, and should we change some places where it says special permit to no's? Or, or yeses, to, you know, to just kind of go back over that again?
Right. If it's a no, it's a no.
Yeah.
If it's a yes, it's a yes.
Because we were, we, well, some people might say we're kind of lenient, and if we couldn't decide, we said, well, make it a special permit.
Which means yes.
Which could, opens, opens the door to yes.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So that's a use table reclassifying, reviewing some of the special permits in particular, I think.
Yep. Okay.
I was thinking, too, there was some, something also with a place where there's definitions in the section of the, of the bylaws, too, that I don't know how we standardize that into the bylaws.
That came up a bit when we were doing the floodplain.
Uh-huh.
We were, we were trying to create glossary, so to speak, that would capture everything, it wouldn't be...
It pulled out somewhere in a section of the, of the zoning somewhere, it's not in the...
You just wanna pull all the definitions into one spot in the bylaw, essentially.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think some of them were different, we had, we had some, some, trying to think of the term I'm trying to give to it.
Wait a minute, I have one more thing.
Okay.
Lighting. Remember, we couldn't find the lighting? Lighting concerns relative to, we've been using the lighting, I'll, I'll look it up, sorry, but we've had some issue with lighting...
You were looking for the lighting section, you couldn't find it.
Yeah, we couldn't find it, that came up.
I remember that discussion.
It was weird, and we felt like we'd, and I went back and looked, I couldn't find it, and so if anybody, so I think that's another, and we, we've had our peer reviewers come in and give us all these things, like this is supposed to be like this, and we all say, yes, we think it's the, in our bylaws, but in fact it's our peer reviewers that are setting those standards, so maybe that's fine, but I think it should be for, for those who are developing.
I probably got some specifications, like straight light and heavy, I know, and heavy down, down lighting.
I gotta look again, Roger, but last, I do, too, and I was, it came up in this meeting, and I'm like, I couldn't find it, and somebody had brought it to me, saying, I don't see it anywhere either, so. I, I know we talk about it with peer reviewers, but I don't know that we have it in our...
Because, I know there was some concern, one of our applicants had said in here...
Yes.
About, you know, South Main Street, how the lighting, and they referred not to have any lighting, and they wanted it, and stuff.
Yep. Well, that was relative to marijuana.
Right.
This is, this is elsewhere. That was what's funny, so I think we've had so many of those different projects that we didn't end up having something, I don't know. Anyway, I can't find it in our...
Yeah, alright, so something else to review. So then, as, to prioritize these, I guess, there's a, the marijuana establishment one is already sort of on the table, and something has been submitted to the Select Board who has passed it on to us, is that what you've got there?
Yeah, that's what this is, from Lesser Newman, Aleo and Nassar. They're sending this on, proposed.
Was that to the Select Board or to the Planning Board?
Um, it says to the Select Board here, but...
Right, so then I think the Select Board, at one of their last meetings, said, we wanna pass this on to the Planning Board. And then there's a time issue.
Diana handed me the other day a copy of these, there are two letters. One is from Evans Cutler, attorneys on behalf of Go Grizz LLC, which propose, proposes really an entire, you know, new marijuana bylaw.
Right.
And then a response from Lesser Newman, Aleo and Nassar lawyers for Deerfield Naturals, and they have a response to that proposal, so...
So I, I kind of feel like that's the one we gotta move on quick and have some public hearings about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So we should put together a schedule for that.
So what, what do you wanna do, though?
We wanna revise...
We have a very open plan.
Revise the marijuana bylaws.
Okay.
Which we're, we had a lot of public hearings, we got a lot of information, the town voted on it, but then that was two or three years ago, and now we've learned a lot since then.
So you have a bylaw you wanna amend it?
Yes.
There's, there's sort of two proposals, or one and a half proposals to amend it.
So there's a proposal, and then the other one's not so much a proposal, it's much just comments on the proposal.
Right, right.
So our gentleman who likes to come on Monday nights is here to enlighten us some more. So, yeah, so let's spend five, can we spend five or 10 minutes on this, and kind of figure out what we need to do with the marijuana bylaws, does that appear right?
We already discussed that.
And if we know what we're gonna do. Attorney, well, we gotta really do it now, I think Attorney Evans can help us, because now there's some time, timelines and stuff we need to meet, too, so.
Thank you.
I'm not sure he can help us, but he'll give us some information.
He's trying to help you from Mike's.
Question, just a minute.
Yeah, cool.
I thought we had something that, it's ancillary to this, in that the setting up of taking greenhouses, creating new greenhouses, not getting any permitting, and then people move in there, you know, they can move in and set up another marijuana thing, was that, was that another issue we wanted to deal with?
It was a discussion we've had, and whether it goes into, whether it goes into this bylaw, or it's a separate bylaw, is something we gotta figure out. But right now, we wanna kind of look at how we can improve our current bylaw, I think, so. Attorney Evans?
Thank you, I just wanted to mention that I, I submitted the draft bylaws, the ones that've been circulated, to the Select Board in, because actually, September 25th, and they, they, I think referred them on to you. Now, then at that meeting, they also received a letter from, that you just noted there, from Lesser Newman.
I think that's this one, yeah.
And as a consequence of that letter, Carolyn Ness asks Dick Kalasewski, if you could be the sort of point person on this, and meet with me and Tom Lesser, and Tom's client, and try to work out these, these differences. And we did, we had a meeting last week, and I thought we were quite successful in working them out. And, and so, in, as a result of that meeting, I tweaked the bylaws that I had submitted, and sent them back to the Select Board, and hopefully they've sent that second set to you, and it's my hope that you will send a scheduled public hearing. And it's my hope that you will send a scheduled public hearing.
I think we have, all we have, that I have is draft one point five, nine twenty nineteen. That, that was a.
This is just one. Yeah, one point five is the, it was the one I submitted to select.
The last one?
No. And then I revised it. The new one is one point six, which I hope you have, but you may not.
That's the last one we got.
I do. I have a copy of the, would you like a red lined copy or a clean copy or both?
Red line.
Red line. I'll give you one of each.
Geez, I have three point O. I'm old. What number do you say?
Uh, one point five.
One point, okay.
Three, it's only three point O, but it's, the draft is one point five.
Okay.
That's the one we got before. On the left hand, look to the left there. There's a.
This is, this is one point six.
Here, this is.
That's red line.
Over here, yeah.
Do you have a second? All right. So could you just help us? What, what's the, um, do you know what the time timeline is as this moves forward?
We're just asking you to schedule this for a public hearing.
All right.
Hopefully in December.
I did, I, I thought I heard something about this, some law that you have to kind of.
Well.
Move on within a hundred and twenty days or three years or.
Yes, I think I have sixty five days.
How much?
But, but it's chapter forty eight, section five, which is in my file here somewhere. Can you look that up if you will, but.
So, so I guess this is the kind of thing that we should schedule a public hearing for. And then could we ask Chris to take it? That, that he could be our advisor consultant on this to actually, because we need someone to take the current one and get input, what we think are issues with it. Then take this one and just see, um, you know, we, we want to start from our current one. And, and we consider this as like an advisement from a, obviously a interested party. So we don't necessarily want the interesting parties to write our bylaws, but if, if they can be helpful, that's great.
So can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Would you be open to, you know, amendments to the proposal that you've, you know, put together?
For the most part, sure.
If we've worked through the planning board?
But, well, no. See, I'm not, that's not a, in my mind, it's not a question to him whether, what he really wants or doesn't want.
Okay.
We're going to have public hearings. We're going to hear from the townspeople.
Yeah.
And we're going to hear from professionals.
Right.
And then we're going to, and, and we would expect and hope that Attorney Evans would participate in that public hearings and make, and he's already, obviously made his, so his desire is already well known. So. And again, a lot of them are very similar to what we have, I think. There's a couple that are going to be more contentious, I'd say, or more, there'll be more discussion than, than other parts.
Right. I guess I was thinking, you know, if you're going to have a public hearing, you might want to have the public hearing on a bylaw that the planning board has already sort of worked on. Um, doing a public hearing on something that's being submitted outside of the planning board.
Right.
And that's where we, we keep saying we want to work on it and we never do.
Right.
So that's kind of where, so.
Well, then, why, or I suggest that we have another meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the only thing on the agenda.
Yeah.
And that's the only thing that we'll deal with. Nobody else.
And have, and before that, have Chris kind of put things together and compare so we can then figure out the bigger.
I don't know if Chris really understands what we want. That's why I think we should be included in the discussion.
Right, we should.
Yeah.
It's sixty five days that, that you are required to hold a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, and that's where our monthly schedule starts to run into things, so.
Anyone on the board, I mean, the only thing that I saw that with the marijuana, because we have that written that you can't have at the establishments within two thousand feet of each other. And it didn't have any language, you know, to deal with town lines. So I think that was one of the issues that we wanted to change it so that they can't be within two thousand feet, providing they're within the same town. Uh, we have a situation where we have one proposed that's close to the town of Waitley and Waitley might have one there. So our bylaw wouldn't allow one if there was already one in the next town. And, and that was one thing. Were there other things that, you know, I know that there's discussion about changing this, but were there other things that we saw as a board problematic?
Do we have something with the school, with the nursery school or whatever over here?
That's been settled.
I think we.
Was that, everything worked into our, into our bylaws? Okay?
My concern is that we, uh, is the RA, anywhere in RA, I'm still, I, I still feel comfortable with that.
That's from this letter here.
Comfortable with it at the time and I, I still don't feel comfortable with it.
And I, and I agree with you. And I think that was a compromise.
It was.
Can you say it again? Can you say it?
So, um, the agriculture, ME, any medical marijuana, medical marijuana establishment, ME, can be with, anywhere within the RA with special permitting.
Okay.
So that just means that we're open to a huge.
That was just for grow though.
Well, that's not my suggestion. I think that's not the way that these revised bylaws were.
So I was going to ask that question too.
No, you mean they don't read that way. They have a, they have a.
Overlay district for where marijuana can be sold and stuff, or is it for?
No, no. I, I like, my question was, do other board members have any, were there any other issues that we want to look at?
That's my issue.
And, and I tend to agree with that.
That's my issue. That was, I was, I was concerned about it at the time and I continue to be concerned about it. I feel like that leaves us.
Yeah, I thought we all were concerned with it.
I think a lot of us were.
We're going to put a moratorium on it for a while till we get it straightened out.
A lot of us were. And that didn't happen. And then we got, then we got, and that, that's where I was, I felt like we kind of bet on the wrong, or some of us bet on the wrong horse.
Yep.
And the horse didn't win. And so we got stuck with the other horse. And that's my problem with it. I feel like.
That got thrown at us pretty fast and we should.
No, no. I think like everybody else in the state, we got, and we weren't as flat footed as, I mean, I think we're fine. But anyway, point being, here we are with, um, the opportunity to have marijuana establishments anywhere in the residential agricultural area.
Well, just grow.
Cultivation.
Cultivation. Yeah, okay. But.
I, I'm not comfortable with it either, Rachel, so.
I just feel like that leaves us very open. Now, I, maybe, maybe somebody can convince me, but at the time, we weren't even talking about that. We didn't have a, we didn't have a big discussion about it.
I believe, it was definitely put before this board is that we were trying to help out local farmers.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I don't think that there were many local farmers.
None.
That were doing this. I mean, we helped out one individual.
Right.
Uh, only because he was able to sell his property for a lot of money.
Right.
But, you know.
So anyway, I think that that's, the, the point is that, that we have, we have, uh, and we, we might want to just think about it. I don't know. But we're.
And I agree. And we have a marijuana overlay district.
Yes, we do.
But then we open this up to RA. So we could just put everything into a overlay district if we wanted.
But also that it continues to be problematic language, this by special permit, right? Is that the same thing that you're talking about?
Yeah, except, well, I mean, I'm very happy that it's by special permit, frankly, because it means that it's not by right.
Yeah, no, I get that. But I'm saying.
So it means every single one would come to us, we'd have to go through a special permitting in order to decide one way or the other. And we have to go through all of the, the steps. And it just feels so, and at a certain point, it's almost gets to be like, uh, and, and, you know, we're going to keep getting proposals. It's a lot.
All right.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If we take out by special permit, then it's not allowed, right?
Well, that's what you're saying. And what we could do is say no there, but then say, we could change, we could change the overlay district if we wanted to. Because right now, the overlay district is pretty small and tight.
Well, I think a lot of the officials wanted that so they could.
So anyway, so all we're doing right now is putting out on the table what we want to talk about.
Okay, but, well, let me say one more thing. The other thing we could do is make a, a special permitting for marijuana. And so then it's a, it's a different, it's a different set of restrictions. I don't know. That's another way.
Say that again. What do you mean?
A special permitting that is particular. No, no, forget. It's a bad idea. Take it back.
Yep.
Thinking out loud.
Strike them in.
Yeah. Pretend they didn't hear that.
Take that back, Alex, wherever you are.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't understand it.
Yeah, good.
Well, Guardians of the Galaxy says, I take it back.
And then the other question is what cultivation, processing and sales.
Yes.
Um, whether we want to relook at that at all? So I think those are, those are the major differences, I guess, with our current.
So we had everything in PI, right? That's originally how we were doing it and then it.
No, for the sales, um, and any kind of product management. I mean.
Well, originally they wanted to have control of everything from the police department, have it close to the police department through the P, the PI zones. And then now that's changed and.
No, it hasn't.
No, it hasn't.
It hasn't.
But we still have it that way.
It's still that way.
Okay. But we got the, we have, we have the growing and whatever down there regarding.
It's just grown.
Just growing. There's no sales, retail sales there.
Okay, all right.
Or manufacturing. Or what's the third one?
Cultivator, manufacturer, retailer and then testing laboratory.
Testing labs.
And then there's the public consumption that we know everywhere.
Right.
So this is actually forty six sixty of the, of the bylaws. So I, so I guess, so what, what we're saying is to, for a public hearing, we want to have a proposal.
Right.
That the public can then react to. And that's the one that if, at the end of the day, they're happy with it, then we can move it to, um, town meeting. If we have a proposal and then people don't like some of the stuff, then we have to change it. Then you have to have like another public hearing if you have substantial changes, right?
Right.
So not having read the entire proposal that's come to the select board to us, but I know one piece of it is about marijuana product manufacturing. So I think the, I think my sense of the planning board is that we would not want that to be the one that's proposed to the town meeting, to the, at the public hearing. If enough people in the public say we should add it, then we could add it and then have another public hearing. But I wouldn't have it go the other way.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Is that what?
And this is in the RA zone you're talking about?
In the RA zone, yeah.
That shouldn't even, it shouldn't even be proposed.
Well, right.
Because it's residential agricultural. That's a commercial or industrial.
Right.
Application. So in my mind, strike it and be done with it.
All right.
And we have commercial, you know.
Right. And I think the, the cultivation of marijuana, it's much different than any crop, you know, and I don't think it belongs in an agricultural or residential situation, plain and simple.
So let's, let's have another. I think we need a full meeting on this or a good, or something. But I think we're going in the direction, the thing that we would want to put out there to the public is no manufacturing in RA and even restricting cultivation in RA more than it's restricted now.
Because if you use that train of thought, anybody that raises any type of real agricultural process, whether it be corns, chips or, uh, beans or whatever. Oh, yeah, well, let's just put up a manufacturing. We'll, we'll can it right here on the thing. So. Doesn't make sense.
Well, it makes sense to some people, but we want to hear from, no, we want to hear from the majority of people.
That's kind of a tricky thing because my understanding of the lawsuit is that, I'm not going to, but I have a lot of woods. So I, I start cutting down the trees. Now, we have something on bylaws that says you can't have a sawmill in town. If I cut my trees down, I can build a sawmill. You can't sawmill because that's farming. So now I cut the wood and I want to build a factory.
There is such a bylaw kept that you can't have a sawmill in town?
Yeah.
Never knew that.
Yeah, it's in the use group. So, but you can if you're cutting the trees in. So now I got this wood, I can build a factory, start making furniture, you know, and have a store. It's like, you know. Nobody does that, but I mean, it.
Well, yeah, but it's, it's manufacturing and it's not zoned for that. So you couldn't do it.
Well, you could because it's farming. It's a, it's a part of farming.
Well, harvesting the trees is and maybe.
But anything to do with it. You can sell the products. You can alter the products. It's like a farm.
But you're making a table or a chair or something. So that's totally different. I can understand getting the raw product into a board. So you could do that. Maybe that's a little different because, you know, they do that with crops now, you know, they.
But there's, there's other farmers in town that, you know, turn their farming products into relish and sell it on site or apples and they make apple pies and stuff like that. You know, you bring. That's what I'm saying. When it's agriculture, there's a lot of things that can be brought into it. We don't see that that often, not at all around here, but.
And like when you said they'll take a, a raw product and make it into an edible product, but it's on a small scale basis. It's not like.
Yeah, I know.
Big manufacturing plant. And there maybe is some verbiage in that, so it wouldn't happen.
Yeah.
Well, we do have agricultural use exemption and then agricultural use that's not exempted, still might get special permit. So there's ways that we're, and some of this is by the state, right? GL, uh, chapter forty eight gives some, uh, so that's all a yeses, but then down here you get, so that sawmilling might fall into down here.
I think it does have a sawmill.
It says no, it's all those, yeah.
Right.
But then for agricultural use.
So how are these portable mills? They can just come in and do other boards and they're fine?
Well, I think a lot of portable stuff is just temporary.
All right. So we're still, we're still on the marijuana rezoning. So, so I think we're really at a point where we need to all read both what we have here and then what's being proposed. And then if we could come up with a proposal that we want to then put out for a public hearing. So let me, let me jump to something here if I can is that there's been a proposal, uh, actually by the select board that we meet with them on November eighteenth, which is two Mondays from now. And it could be a short thing. It's, it would be executive session about the, uh,
Executive session, yeah.
Dollar general issue.
Yeah.
And then maybe we could do.
Like at six o'clock we were talking, right?
Yeah, we could do that. Yeah, I think six o'clock.
Cause I have, I have something at seven, Monday, Monday since.
But then maybe we could stay that night and talk a little more about marijuana and then have a public hearing in, in, in December at our Monday, uh, first Monday in December. We could do a public hearing for the proposed bylaw.
Might I suggest that we take it upon ourselves to think about how, if we do want to limit the grow in the RA as to how we can, how we can do that fairly, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
It's very, I think it's very difficult to tell somebody on that side of town you can and somebody in this side of town you can't.
I agree.
That's why we ended up with a special permit.
That's why we ended up with an everywhere with special permit. It just, it makes me, uh.
So I think that's the biggest issue is to figure, I think a lot of people are against the manufacturing in RA. So that, that would certainly be a baseline. Actually, that's not revising anything because that's the way it is right now, I think. But to look at just general cultivation in RA, how, how else could we possibly handle? No, is it a special permit? Is it an overlay district?
So I'm just going back.
What night are you saying?
We're just going backwards a minute. On November eighteenth going to be set to do, I just.
Oh, it's a Monday.
Kind of jumping ahead, but can we?
Well, you brought it up.
Can we get it up, uh, can we get a quorum?
I can be here.
Okay, I can be there. You could be there at six.
At six, yeah. I, I don't want to, I can't sleep past this hour.
Be there?
The eighteenth?
It's the third Monday.
Yeah.
Might be good for you?
Yes.
All right. So, um, so I'm going to tell Diana that tomorrow and she's going to make chief the select board. But it seemed like she'd get at least two hours.
What time is it?
Six o'clock.
Six p.m. Six o'clock.
So if we did our executive session then about the dollar general issue and then, um, afterwards, we could continue this discussion. Chris, could you come that night? Two Mondays from now?
Yeah, I think so.
And then if we've all kind of got, read over this a little bit and be more prepared, could, we could hammer out a proposal that then we could, uh, then you got to do a two week notice for public hearing. So that wouldn't be enough time. But, um, well, then we'd have to think of another date in September, in December, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. Lovely month to have extra meetings.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Attorney Evans, any, any other comments on this one?
Is it okay if I converse with Chris about this? Fill him in on, on this?
Well, he, he, he knows, he hasn't signed a contract yet, so he's not getting paid. So I don't know if he wants to converse without getting paid for it, but, um,
Okay.
It, you know, I don't think, I don't think we have a problem.
Certainly talk after we get started on things.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't want to volunteer him for anything, but, uh, uh, the main thing is to, I think, is that you should be here for the public hearing. I mean, I, I mean, I personally like bylaws when they're out in the open and we don't like backroom stuff.
Yes, that's why I've been so.
I'm not saying you're doing that.
Through the trans.
So we are very excited to have a public hearing.
We have seen more of you.
Everything comes out here.
I've seen more of you. Most people in my family.
Yes. Likewise. And I hope you've read these, these, these drafts that I've been bringing around for the last couple of months.
But it still has the, the product manufacturing on it. And so you obviously haven't heard us, you know? So it goes, it goes both ways.
It's just whether the rest, the voters have different.
Yeah.
I think we got it.
It's their call.
And we want to put it out to the town, but if you put it out one way versus putting it out another way.
With the old one?
It has an impact on the ultimate decision, right?
Yeah, but what, there can always be an amendment.
Yep.
You know, all the four towns.
Yep, yep.
But, but the issue, it seems to be before the board right now is public hearing, you know.
Yeah.
It's been submitted.
Yep.
And your job is to schedule a public hearing on what's been submitted.
Good.
Dick, did you have another copy of this for Paul?
I do.
Okay.
The redlined or the, uh.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
And I have a one point five version, but I don't.
But you've sent this to, Diana has it, or?
I have, totally, yeah, I've sent this to everybody.
I have, we have it, I, I have it on.
Yeah, alright.
Did we get it by email already?
Yes.
You sent this to us via email?
Me? No, Diane.
You think it came from Diana?
And did she send out the lesser letter?
Uh, why do I think I have it, then maybe I have it from.
I think that went to everybody.
The lesser letter?
No, that one I don't have.
I'm not in a loop anymore.
No, there's no loop to be in, yeah, yeah, anyway. I know, it must've been so weird.
I don't know anything anymore, it's, it didn't matter before, I knew it, it didn't happen, so.
You knew what you didn't know. Now you just don't know what you don't know.
Okay.
It's better off not, trust me.
Alright, thank you, Attorney Evans.
This is number four.
So the, what's the next priority, you think, is, um, we have the solar, which wasn't, I don't think is such a big deal, so I'd like to think that could go quickly.
Yeah, I think the solar, we should just limit it to the area, and not how much power it can generate.
Right, but the number, the number we've never come up with, I don't think, is, what is that?
Well, what did, what did we, so we currently classify small, medium, or large, or extra-large by the, the voltage.
Yes.
No, the power.
The power, yeah.
So if we, so if we just take the footprint and forget about the power, I think we've got what we.
So, let's just say the extra-large can, like it is now, it can be almost anything, and it has to come before us as a special permit.
Right.
A large, you could say, could be up to, I don't know, five acres? I mean, it's really kind of random.
That's the thing, it seems sort of arbitrary for us to be like two or five.
Right now, it's on a, on a lot, your, a house lot, you know, it can.
Well, now, residential's a different issue.
Right, so we're talking about one gets to the other.
That's gonna be more difficult, but the one that's.
So what's the vision? Like, what's the purpose of it? Like, what's the goal?
Not to have such a, not that I, I hate to choose these words, but an eyesore type thing. There are some people that find it offensive, and that's what we've heard the most feedback.
It's a, a structure that goes up in somebody's backyard that somebody else has to look at, so.
Some of us find.
There's gonna be issues.
Some of us find looking at solar technology is pleasing, other people look at solar technology as, you know, as degradation of, yeah, it's an eyesore.
And they can put it on their roof by right.
Right.
So that's not, it's not like you can't do so.
The basic thing is that, 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 limiting, limiting the power, when the panels keep getting larger, getting able to do more and more power, then footprint seems to be the best method of.
Right.
Doing it, rather than even figuring the electrical part into it.
I feel like taste is subjective, though, you know what I mean? Like, what are we weighing it against, you know?
That's why we're trying.
Oh, yeah, why, why do we have limits on it, is what you're saying?
Kind of.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
So if somebody has a property, and they've put their solar in, basically in their neighbor's sight line.
Right.
But not in theirs, it's not their house, it's not, you see what I'm saying? So, and that's all, we, we are basically helping neighbors get along, we're not, you know, you don't just say like, hey, everybody be nice to each other.
I've looked at houses in this town where you can look into your neighbor's pool, you know what I mean?
Right.
Like, and maybe I don't like to look at corn, but, you know, that's in my sight line. You know, I get, that's where I'm coming from, like, well, sure, there are lots of things that neighbors do that other people don't want to look at, but does that mean that we need to make?
So somebody puts a full-on solar array in their backyard, that's okay?
Well, I mean, people can sunbathe naked in their backyard, and that's okay, I mean, people do what they do. You know?
Well, you know, if we're gonna change something, if we change it to a footprint, probably in another few years, we'll change it again.
Well, and that's the thing, like, I'm just playing devil's.
I think it is different.
Yeah, yeah.
Devil's advocate, I'm not saying.
I'm kind of working through it, like, it's a different thing, um, it's a structure, somebody's, I guess.
So let, let's just get back to what, what our definitions are, so small scales is, uh.
But how can we define it if we don't know what it is?
No, I'm gonna tell you what it says, not.
We have one existing.
Right.
So small scale means, and we're talking ground-mounted, a capacity of ten K or less, so that's not, we don't worry about that. And then we have large and extra-larges, those are the ones that we're wondering if we need to change, right?
Well, because we've run into.
Large is, uh, is the ten K to two, two megawatt, and does not occupy more than ten acres, so we had, you know, we already started talking about acres.
Right.
So maybe, so we might just say, take out that two megawatt thing and just stick to the ten acre thing. To me, it's more than, to me, it's also about stormwater and other things, when you're talking about, you know, ten acres, so it's not just about neighbors and that kind of.
It's a structure.
The other thing, John, is that, is that the, the size and the power that's generated is gonna be regulated by ever-source. They're gonna, they're gonna accept or not accept different sizes.
And that's not, has nothing to do with us, nor is it gonna be fixed.
And an extra-large is two megawatts or more, and more than ten acres, so we, we, we gotta, take a less than ten acres and more than ten acres.
I guess what I'm saying is that the ever-source says, we, we don't, we don't have the, we don't want this extra power, so just by saying that says, you can't do it.
But that's not, that's not a planning board thing, that's an ever-source.
That's ever-source.
They might keep changing, but we have to have our bylaws that don't care about their, what their decisions are.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just seeing us doing something that can never happen, you know what I mean? That's the, that's the issue I'm talking about.
But what we're talking about is how, how big these things are, whether they need special permits or by rights or not, right? So the less than ten kilowatts isn't a size, and that's by, that's by right, okay?
Ten kilowatts is by right? It's still a special permit.
Well, being able to convert this would be, like, I have no idea what, how the two things relate to one another, like ten kilowatts.
Well, what we're saying is that the amount of megawatts and kilowatts doesn't matter to us for zoning, what matters for zoning is size, that's what we've kind of come up with in the past.
So if we're gonna change it and change it to some, just get rid of.
Yeah, so small scale is, is by right everywhere.
Just do the, just do the footprint, make sure the footprint's gonna work.
So then you get in, then after that, it becomes commercial, and then.
That's what you're talking about, somebody could put that up in the backyard, and it's like a pool.
Right.
Even a pool, it's a different.
But the difference between.
Things, like, but it's a thing.
I, I, I agree with, and Mary, that it's too arbitrary, and that whether it's a large or extra-large, it goes through the same scrutiny. So, you know, I kind of tend to, don't really see the difference.
So right now, we have ten acres or more, if it's bigger than ten acres, it's a no, every place except industrial. So the one that we approved is in the quarry, right?
Which was.
All the other ones are ten acres or less, and they're special, they're special permit.
That's the excellent.
The two we approved were in, this is, okay, so this is why, why we got kind of jammed up, because both of them, we had to, they had to have variances, because they were, neither of them in industrial. Both of those weren't commercial.
That's true.
And that was when Pat.
So they got a variance.
Right, both did, though.
They get a.
Both did, and we, that's one of the things we, we need to think about, too, is that if we.
No, it's, we, we can do special permits for the ten acre or less.
Which we did.
That's what we've done, the other.
Well, I, that's not the one I'm talking about, I'm talking about the one by the railroad.
Oh, yes, the, the brownfields, right.
And then of course our, big one on Roman Hill. Both of those, we made, we made, they got variances.
Cause they were extra-large?
And they were not in industrial, they were in commercial. So that's one of the things, and Pat gave us, I was on her way out the door, she said, you guys are, you're changing your bylaws, you know, with these two, we, I don't know, I'm just saying, we, we've made two variances.
And the reason they had to do was because of the power that they produce, not the size.
Nope, no, 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 everything to do with the fact that those were both projects were in.
Commercial areas.
Commercial areas, and not in industrial, and we, we had made this decision based, I think, my, my guessing is that commercial. Solar doesn't create jobs. Commercial, and, you know, zones, we want to keep open to commercial opportunities for people to grow businesses. Solar is not a growth business, I mean, you put it in, you're good, and so I think that that was probably part of it, so now here we've had these two good projects, and both of which are, one's done, and the other one is, you know, hopefully close to underway. Keep going by, and they're not, but anyway, um, and we, we did them because we, I believe those were good places for them, but they were both in commercial.
And, and I don't, I personally don't see anything wrong with the, the variances for the one that was on River Road, because it's really, nobody can see it anyways.
Right, so, but the question is, should we, is it, what does it say? Does it say with a variant, or should we say with, does it say with special permit, or do we have to do a?
Up to ten acres is a special permit.
And then.
Over ten acres is no, except for industrial.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying.
Which then requires a variance, and they got it from the Z B A, not from us, right?
I think you, you were hitting it, just get rid of the voltage and leave everything the way it is.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And just take out the word.
Okay.
Just get out the power.
The voltage.
Are you following this?
I'm sorry.
Are you following this?
Yeah, I think so.
Just take out the power, not the voltage.
Solar's so good, how come some communities won't even let a solar field be a commercial, yeah, constructed in there?
They are not as enlightened as, dear friend.
Enlightened or smarter?
Well, I, I think it kind of goes down to quality, and, and, like, beauty's in the eyes of the beholder, you know? It's like I said, some people look at technology and think, wow, this is really great, and other people look at it as an eyesore, they just want to see the green trees and the flowers and the metal, and, and that's what it's all about.
Fossil fuels.
But I think even then, I, I think it's also about commercial development.
If you really. You want to. Took away all the tax incentives and all this stuff, and if you did it just on total profit. How many solar fields would be built?
There wouldn't be.
Exactly.
But, you know, it, it's, then you kind of.
Doesn't mean it's wrong, though, Roger.
Right.
Doesn't mean it's right either, because.
Well, then it, it gets into this whole difference of opinion, if, if you're an individual, and I'm not taking sides, if you're an individual that believes in global warming and climate change, then the solar fields definitely work. And you can be a person who's extremely frugal and not believe in that, but just say, hey, look, I'm getting free energy from the sun, so why not do it, you know?
Unless the sun doesn't come out.
Just, you know, you've got a million people, you've got to have millions of different.
And we appreciate these discussions, but that's not a planning board issue.
It is, it is.
Well, no, I think what Rachel was saying is, we're in it because of, it, it's, it's built, it's built infrastructure, and that's what the planning board helps determine, where does built infrastructure that's gonna be around for a long time, where should that go, and where shouldn't it go, and who should.
But they do have a life expectancy, I think twenty years is, is considered.
So, um, so you go back to our things, and yes, ten acres or less, special permit, sounds good.
Yep.
No for the super-large ones, and then I think it has to go back to being tougher with the variances, that, that's maybe, which is outside of our use table.
But what I'm saying is that we gave variances to two, okay, I'm gonna say it again, to two projects in commercial area, that's more, that I, I, I stand by both of those decisions, but are we, are we opening up? We don't want to necessarily.
What I'm saying, can we make changes to our use table? Our use table is good, it's the variance that's the problem. That's what you're saying, isn't it? So what could we do to, to change our use tables?
Well, what if we allot in commercial?
Oh, you, you say it in.
We just made two variances in commercial.
Oh, so you're wanting to change the no to special permit?
Or maybe we, we review the sites, and we say, what, what actually is industrial and what's commercial? There's a point at which maybe that site, that, the railroad yard, that should have been industrial in the first place.
Yeah.
Maybe that's the issue, the issue isn't that we should allow solar in commercial, but that some of our commercial property is not.
I got confused, I thought you.
And because it's brownfields and it was.
But maybe this way.
Some people will get industrial, is you're actually creating, taking raw products and making something.
Right.
So I think that's.
And, you know, to that point, Roger's point, we have an industrial park, and we don't have any industry there at all.
Right, so why not?
You know, it's all commercial.
Right.
Right.
But you know why, this, I think that this is good, the way that we have it, in, in granting variances, because if you have the variance issue at hand, then somebody can come in and say, look, I want to put in this extra-large solar field, and nobody's gonna see it, and.
Like the one that we did.
Right, but somebody else could come in and say, I want to put in this extra-large solar field, but everybody's gonna see it, and then there's gonna be a lot more objection, like there was for the frontier one over off of Sett Right Road. And, and so the variance thing is a good thing, and then it, it kind of gives, there's extra scrutiny that goes into that, instead of just saying, if you can put it in the commercial, because one of the issues that we have with other things that have gone in town, is that we have residential that abuts a lot more commercial property. And, you know, people, you know, it, that's a difficult thing, because the residents there can see that commercial thing, that's where they get, and like you said, we're trying to find something to get everybody happy and get sustainable, you know, projects in town.
I guess if we, if we're just gonna change something else, and this can go and just get rid of the, the wattage of the panels, and then we can deal with it later if we find other stuff we want to change.
So what I'm hearing is, that's your second priority.
Well, we thought it was gonna be easy, is also why we.
Two down.
You go on.
You want to work on marijuana, you want to work on solar.
And so I, I would say that we want to potentially open the extra-large, the no there, we might consider making that a.
With.
Special permit, is, am I right in that the variances are by the Z B A?
Yes.
Yes.
Where a special permit's at by the planning board.
Right.
So that would be a reason, to some extent, to, if you change that no to a S P, then it comes to the planning board.
I think the other reason is that you really shouldn't be using the variance procedure the way you're using it, it's supposed to be for hardships.
That's why it was so, and then you do two in a row.
Hardship, right, and to say that those, yeah.
Well, the one the railroad yard was, I think it was a hardship.
No, it wasn't.
Because the, the, the property there couldn't be used for much anything other than, than what we, what we used it for.
Is your definition of hardship?
That's not, that's not where the definition goes in the zoning act.
Okay, but I'm just saying it was a brownfields area, and.
No, it, I mean, I agree with you, but, but not really.
In, in the, in the background, yeah.
And I mean, that kind of, yeah.
So this would be something that we'd bring to a public hearing, if we're gonna say, we're gonna make a change, we're gonna change, get rid of the wattage thing, whatever the thing, power thing.
Yeah.
And then say, should we go to S P?
Sounds like a very important thing to, to work on.
Thank you.
So, so I'm hearing floodplain, marijuana, solar, and then was it accessory apartments?
I think so.
Adopt those things, but I think we need to discuss a lot of those.
Yeah, well, to have public hearings and then move on forward, yeah, this is like the thing. So then accessory apartments has been, we're talking about that forever, yes.
So I, I lettered them, I said, A is marijuana, B is solar site, D is accessory apartments, and E is adopting the floodplain, that's your four ones, is that what you're talking about?
Maybe you skipped a letter.
I know, because I didn't, you were counting them there, you were getting four of them, I just gave them arbitrary letters, I went down the list.
Indeed.
I love that.
Yeah.
Well, floodplains, I mean, we've done a lot, that's, so we're not even, that can be up here, so floodplain, good, marijuana is this one.
Yep, we need it.
Solar, and then accessory.
Four, okay.
And accessories been waiting too long.
Yeah.
But it's a bigger.
But, but, I, I, I guess, I guess I'm wondering, we were, we had a lot of talk about accessory apartment, but really, the bottom line is it should just be two apartments, instead of accessory, I mean, what do we?
Well, this is.
You know, this was, this was the.
So if I can make a proposal here, I, I know many other towns have gone through this, and that's where maybe we could use Chris's, to do a little study here and come up with like, what, what are the best practices out of towns, because I think we're, we're kind of zero.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy to do that, that's something that, that I worked on in the planning commission, too.
And I think that is something, yeah, I know, Perkog and BBPC has some good stuff out there.
Right.
So I think that would be a.
Yep.
A fruitful, good way to look at it.
So you got your four, you got your four choices that we talked about.
Chris, as you work on that, I mean, you know, one of the things that I see a lot in this town, is that, you know, outside of the central village district, you can't have multi, two, two-family houses, duplexes. But there's a lot of homes, and I know at least a dozen, where they added accessory apartments to single-family houses in the central village district, and they're really, they're two-family houses, but they're allowed in that district anyway, so how they ever get tangled up into that accessory apartment heading is beyond me. So then, you have a situation where you can have, because this is where C R V stops and C two starts, or RA starts, let's say, and you have one house that has accessory apartment, and this one has accessory apartment, one's technically illegal if that family member's not there, and this one isn't, so I don't know. I tend to think that it should be two, two-family houses, and if you don't want to have like duplexes, all, just say, one resident has to have a twenty-five percent larger footprint than the subordinate one, or something like that.
Yeah, I think, I think there's some pretty clear ways of, of making distinctions between accessory apartments and duplexes that are really important, and I've seen good bylaws that have been written really clearly about this, so I'll, I'll bring some of those in, and I'll share a, a good example, we can maybe start with that and, and work off of.
There's also, there's also a housing thing we did.
Inventory housing.
It was that, yeah.
Housing inventory, it just, it's.
So that, does that exist? We, we, we did do that in town here.
Yeah, so this is to help us with that, it's a good step.
Yeah, so in fact, it was like taking, making smaller lots in certain areas of town, and, and even out in the RA, having, having multiple, you know, six, eight units in a, in a building, we did that, too. that, too.
We talked about changing that, I don't think we will, but that's-
There's a lot of that that's out there, that I don't think ever got into the zone.
What is that called, something zoning?
Okay.
Cluster zoning.
Cluster, yeah.
Can I ask, is, is things like being owner occupied, is that, does that go into zoning?
Yeah, and it usually is an issue with accessory apartments.
Because that's kind of, I think a little bit maybe, I don't know if I heard it right, but that to me has something to do with accessory apartment versus two duplexes, you know?
But the problem that you have with stuff like that, and I'm not disagreeing with your overall thinking, is that, say, I have a house, and I make an accessory apartment for a relative, and then, you know, I want to move south. He buys the house from me as an investment, now you got two living quarters, you know, you can't tell him that he can't rent one, or both.
But he's living there.
No, he isn't.
No, he's not.
He's moved to Florida, I mean, he's not living there.
Kept, kept moving to Florida.
I moved to Florida, and he buys it as an investment.
Roger's sitting here buying an investment property.
And that's where I'm, I guess I'm wondering if we want to have some-
That's not an accessory apartment.
But you now, you still got two units, what are you going to do? Tell the guy he's going to take one apart? You can't do that.
Well, you just can't rent it.
You just can't rent it.
But another community-
We're saying that's the thing you could put into the zoning, maybe we don't want it, but you can.
A lot of communities do have an owner occupied provision.
Yeah.
And, and like, give some advantage to the owner occupied people, and maybe not discount, you know, don't prevent the others, but give an advantage to the ones that, because I think we're normally, neighborhoods are better when they're owner occupied, right? I think that's a general sense.
Well, supposedly, because you take some pride in your, you live there.
But it, and I get that, but to say that you can, you cannot limit that person from renting it, it's just like, you know, we have a 55-plus community, if somebody that lives there takes in their grandson to live with them, who's only 14, you can't tell the kid he can't live there, you can't throw the people out there.
I'm glad you brought that up, so now we'll say that-
Is this on the agenda tonight?
No, but I'm just-
Is this on the agenda tonight?
I'm just reading the other policies and see if we like them or not, just going to try and like, get a moving target.
But what I'm saying is that when you think about the accessory apartment thing and how we go about it, you know, there's a lot of things that you say you can do, and there's a lot of bylaws that, you know, kind of go through and aren't really challenged, if you don't want to have the issues.
There's another community close by, you can put a duplex up or accessory apartment, and a lot of times, this is what they told me, they'll choose accessory apartment because the building requirements are less stringent, so it's cheaper to put that up, and that's why they don't.
That's true, too.
So that answers some of the question there.
You don't need all the fire separation codes and stuff?
Yeah, five minutes doubled up.
All right, so now we need to make like a calendar for this. You know, if we say that we want to have all of this ready for next May town meeting? Is that realistic?
April, that's right.
Well, is it April or May?
April, elections, elections, no, April.
April.
No, meetings are April.
Or if we say-
I do, I do.
You know, we absolutely want the floodplain, the marijuana, and the solar, and then hopefully we come close to getting the accessory.
Yeah.
The accessory, I'm also not sure if that's part of a bigger housing thing, that we might go back to our housing production plan and bring some of those people back in, some of those people that were part of that might want to come to some public hearings.
Yeah.
So that, that we might have to learn as we go a little bit, but get it started anyway.
Yeah, let's take it as far as we can, as we can.
We're going back to two meetings a month, I know it.
I don't want to stray too far, Chris, but since you've been involved with planning in other municipalities, I've been hearing a lot from the governor about doing away with, like Deerfield zoning, because they're saying it restricts home, housing development so much, in that they really want to promote more. So they're talking about having statewide zoning.
Like stretch code for the-
Have you, no, not-
That's what the-
I honestly don't think that's ever going to happen in Massachusetts. I think that's a, that would be really, really difficult to achieve. They've been trying to, you know, update the state's zoning act to just make really fairly minor, modest changes in it for something like 30 or 40 years now, and they can't get it through the legislature, just, just to update the zoning act and make it more modern, essentially.
Steve Gulick almost, almost had it there two years ago.
Exactly. So it's, it's a really tough thing to make any changes at all, but to take away local zoning, I can't imagine that happening, to be honest with you.
But, but there is more of these best practices, and there's this Healthy Choice Initiative that I just got an email about today, to try to promote, they need, we need more housing in Massachusetts, mostly in Eastern Mass, but I think it's also relevant to some of us out here.
And they create incentives for doing that.
And this whole thing about, you remember this whole thing about affordable housing? If you don't have 10%, then people can come in, and so they have these things where you can kind of, if, what is, if your housing, if your housing stock has grown-
That's, then you-
Then you can get some waivers on some other thing.
This is why we were-
I think our housing stock has grown, actually, not our affordable housing, but housing in general, because of sugar.
Oh, housing inventory, yeah, yeah.
Inventory, this is about housing inventory.
Yeah, but there's nothing to come under that, that ability to count is affordable housing, though, and that's all part of that.
No, but there's other things that they're just talking about, they just need housing growth. So they're not talking about affordable, they're two different sides.
All right, all right.
So, so what I will do is take your top priorities and draft a scope of work, very simple, and I'll pass it along to Diana. Hopefully we'll get a contract put together, I'll also run it by you guys, maybe send it to John or Rachel, and you can share it, just to make sure that the language seems like it's okay. And hopefully we'll get started fairly soon.
Excellent. Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Glad tonight worked out. All right, so the other thing on the agenda was how we function, was there more discussion we want to have about that, again, with trying to get another staff person? Yes, we need to function better.
Yes.
We're still dealing with zoning, revisiting zoning issues.
Yes, yeah, you have another?
We did have a couple more minor matters perhaps than those you discussed.
Oh.
Related to your signage bylaws.
We just lost our consultant, so it is, it's right now being as good, but-
I don't think we need the consultant necessarily.
Signage bylaws should be on our-
Yeah, there are a couple, a couple of matters I just feel like have become, are sort of like gray, or not really addressed with the current verbiage, and could perhaps be clarified, use the word clarify, in the heading of what we're trying to achieve.
Can you send us some ideas on this?
Well, I have two things I wanted to bring up. One would have to do with lighting illumination.
Yeah, we've got a couple minutes to do this, you want to come up to the microphone?
Um, Pestrich.
And just introduce yourself.
Um, this is one thing that-
Can you just introduce yourself, please?
Steven Pestrich. Let's see, the matter that I'm thinking of, it has to do with, that the language I've seen in the sign bylaws talks about things like internally illuminated signs and flashing signs, but it doesn't really address this new phenomenon of the LED signs that we have now, that are sometimes extremely bright, usually flash or display different messages, whatever, they try to attract your attention. For some reason, I know that they're just, they're popping up, but they're not really seemingly addressed in the current language, and sometimes I find, well, just very disconcerting, or like, for instance, when Cumberland Farms put their sign up in the old location, that was like flashing every couple of seconds with like the gas price. And that was like, I thought specifically, no flashing lights, but somehow they got to put it up, and said no intern, it didn't, it said no internally illuminated signs.
Dear grandfather.
Technically, that was a new sign, the old sign was just-
But it was an old sign, and it was already internally lit, I believe.
No, I think it was just- No, it wasn't internally lit, they put the gas up with letters, the numbers.
Oh, no, I know, that could be different.
But anyhow, now of course, I've seen, been in some towns or situations where, you know, it's like a quaint, like historic town, I remember one in Southern New Hampshire, and like, the only thing you could see was this bright LED multicolored thing in front of like one business, and that can, you know, I just want to make sure that the town addresses that as a new issue.
So I, I think we all agree that you, I know there are different types of lights out there.
Or specifically resonate, they could be at, like, along Route 5, but not necessarily in the rest of town, because that's the highway, you know, and let it go there, but, or then you have weird things where like, there's the, what is it, the Coldwell Banker Place, that now suddenly has decided to put their LED illuminated listing sheets in their window. The whole window is now this bright illumine, like LED illuminated display of everything they sell, and it, it's almost the brightest thing in the center of town now, and it just seems like out of character, and-
So I think we have to distinguish, one thing is our bylaws, and then the other is enforcement, so that's, there is-
Also the thing is like, is there a level of like intent, like light intensity that can be viewed as well, like-
You've got to figure out the signage, because they've gone over their, their allotted signage, if they're, okay, the windows-
But what's an average?
It's not only a square footage, but it's like the amount of lumens that are-
Right, but stray light, I think that gets into, if it stays on their property, I know what you're saying, it can, you can see, just see a ball, if you're on the mountain, and you can see a area that's lit up with parking, and you can just see the glow, you know, so it's going straight up or straight down, so how do you, this is maybe if it came out onto the street, then maybe there's an issue.
These are generally focused on displaying to the passerby, they are advertising, it's not just building lighting, it is, or whatever, site illumination, this is-
No, I understand, and it's, like you say, it's advertising to a certain-
Yeah, basically, it is specifically advertising, there's a message that's presented by this. And I just felt like it's something that, you know, could be updated when someone looks at these-
So I know you've been here, other meetings, and you've been here tonight, so I'm going to go back to what I said at the beginning, if you could write some things down with proposals, because this is not something that, just to be honest-
That's not what you're trying to do tonight.
Well, it's, it's, you just heard, so we had five, we had four other bylaws that were going to, is priority order, and, and so to move this along quicker, we want citizens' input, to tell you the truth, that's going to help. And if you've thought about this, obviously, maybe more than we have. So if you could, I don't know if you want to do any research about it, but I'm sure other, again, other towns have figured this out, because you're right, that, those, is lumens, I don't know what they talk about, like we talk about decibels with the noise, we talk about decibels, there must be something with light.
It's also heat, they also talk about heat.
Lumens are certainly brightness.
Soft is a certain temperature.
So is that something you could help us with, or?
Uh, I-
I just don't want to, you'll leave here, and we won't do anything for six months, and you'll be, you know, be like, why am I doing this?
Do you want to draft a, do you want to draft something?
Help us.
That would be great.
I guess I could.
Or enlist some other people, I mean, I-
I just was trying to present this as a concept, that it seems like-
It's a great concept.
All right.
We all have-
Okay.
I'm going to say, go.
But it's on our-
Yeah, go do something.
But our priority list is like, it's like, I'm just honest, nothing's going to happen for six months.
Okay, well, I wasn't expecting anything to happen too fast, this is Deerfield.
Okay, but I'm just saying-
But if you want what you want, you should start with what you want, and then everybody can give you whatever.
Because they've got backwards signs.
Exactly.
I think the buildings, you know, like Joe Blow's Cafe, or whatever, you know, and I'm not thinking of like advertising, so when we look at stuff, it's like square footage for the sign, not so much for advertising, so maybe that's going to become an issue at some point, you know?
Well, and what it brought up for me-
But really, when you talked about these flashing signs, I thought you were talking about all the speed signs that are popping up everywhere.
Yeah, they're flashing. The ones at Cumberland Farm don't flash so much as they change numbers, they don't really flash, they just change numbers.
One of the ways that I can describe the lighting is that, if you go to a place like Hamden Beach, and it's almost like a carnival, you get, there's flashing lights, there's colored lights, and there's all this flashing, but you go to someplace like Newport Royal Island, one o'clock in the morning on a Saturday, and it's all well lit, but they're not flashing, they're all the same color, and, you know, it's, it's a totally different atmosphere, you know, and I'm one, I love signs, because I love to see where I'm going, I hate hunting in the dark places. And we've had, we've had more complaints-
Go to the Vesh.
Well, I was going to say, we've had more complaints about people not being able to find things than we have, and people complain about bright light signs.
And you know, I wonder if we were to put those signs up for the speed, why didn't they make them straight?
I thought speed, people couldn't find the Vesh.
Every one of them is cockeyed, if you look at them, there's not a single one that's straight or round town.
Doctor, please support.
Well, and also, like, in what terms of ADA compliance, like, if someone is neurodiverse and we have flashing signs, like how compliant are we when it comes to nitpicking things like that?
Yeah.
So we got a thing here that's section 3222, section A, C, additional signs identifying a firm or other advertising devices shall not be allowed except by special permit from the ZBA. You know, so I think that's, that's why I say this, this bylaws, and then this monitoring and enforcement.
Enforcement's been pretty lax in this town historically.
But that's why it's good to know what our bylaw is, because if we don't need to change the bylaws, if we just need to enforce it, that's different than changing the bylaw.
No, they showed up and said, you have to close down your treehouse.
While you're at the bylaws, what about the issue of off-premise commercial advertising signs, directing people to out-of-town business? Is there a specific comment?
So one conversation in a time here.
Yeah.
This is interesting.
All right. We're good?
I'm just wondering about enforcement, like, there seems to be a very-
Right.
-wide scheme of how things are enforced, so I'm wondering how things are enforced.
You go to the town hall, and then they tell you to go away.
Sometimes, or sometimes a cop shows up at your house, so I'm wondering how you get which response.
That'd be nice to know.
It's not on the planning board responsibilities, which is a lovely, which is a lovely thing to say, but if you want to look that up and tell us next month, that would be great, because obviously, none of us are versed in this. And then the question was about directional signs, there's another whole little paragraph about what's allowed and what's not. You can direct people to your business, but that sign can only be so big, and-
What about if the business is out of town?
Oh, no.
Yeah, let's, let's not go there.
Let's not go, no, no, that's important.
Yeah, I think, I'm not, I'm not sure, but there is a bylaw for directional signs, so.
All right.
Thank you for bringing this, bringing this up, and we have put it in our minutes, have we?
Yes.
This discussion, and that we want to address it, but it's, and we await any support you can provide. All right.
Give it one of your letters.
So, so the other thing, so I was just saying staffing is, it's a thing, it's a thing, everybody seems to be aware that we need support, but we're not getting it, so we'll play disposition, we'll get filled in the next month or two.
Am I allowed to ask what happened? I don't know what happened, I, Michael.
So I just, as I was reading the minutes, I was like, he was just introduced last month, and then a week or two later, he resigned.
When was it last month?
Oh, Lipinski, Michael Lipinski.
Yeah, it was two months ago, I thought.
It was in the minutes.
It was in the minutes, yeah. I know, but it wasn't your last...
Someone said he bought a winning lottery ticket.
We, he was introduced in one set of minutes, and the next time he disappeared.
Right, so I'm wondering if anybody has the straight poop on it.
No, no, the minutes were right, but, but he, he quit after we announced it, he introduced him.
Yeah, okay.
That's why if we introduce too many people, we'll have more people leaving.
No, he was gone by, this is what...
I don't know.
Maybe you should start introducing something.
That's what I'm saying. Every time we introduced, we introduced a guy that came in here, and the next meeting he was gone, and we introduced another one, he was gone. This is the third guy that we introduced him, and he was gone.
Going back to the minutes that we approved earlier...
He was here, he was here.
Not for the last meeting.
The one before that, is that what you're saying?
We think this sentence is left over from the previous...
Wait, wait, okay, today's minutes?
Yeah, the October 7th ones.
October the 7th.
He was not at the last meeting.
Rachel says he was not there, but he was at the previous one.
He was at the previous one, he was September, not October.
Oh, yeah, maybe that, maybe you're right.
Maybe erase it off of that.
Maybe, maybe that's what happened, hang on, let me get that out.
You just alters them.
That's what I do. I edit them.
I'm not carding, I work at the place I work.
Yeah, where the heck is that?
I'm getting a card, dang it.
Yeah, because the September ones, you have the same sentence.
Okay, so we'll take that out.
You changed it 7/14.
Okay, hold on a minute, let me get there.
Getting it done? That's my name, yeah, yeah.
Where are those minutes?
So the only other quick thing is, we did have a letter that there was these folks from a place called Growth Space New England, who on Friday they said they were going to be here, and then this morning they said they weren't going to make it, and they are, they want to come talk to us about putting a marijuana cultivation and processing center off of Plain Road. Plain Road East, which abuts the highway. Actually, up behind one of Yankee Candle's warehouses.
Town administrator, yeah.
So, I don't know, I told them to look at our bylaws, because I don't believe it's zoned for it.
Is that residential or cultural, or is that, see, I thought it was more commercial?
I think it's industrial on that side of the street.
Behind Yankee?
I don't have a map.
Behind what?
Behind Yankee, look, look where it is though, it's not even...
This is the Yankee warehouse, this is Mill Village, Plain Road East, and they're proposing it up here.
Oh, I think that is...
Oh, do you think it is?
Yankee Way is over here.
I think this is RA, and that's...
So they're right inside the commercial.
So it's commercial, they can't put a grow.
No.
No. Without a variance.
Well, it's not in the overlay district.
Right, I know that. They can't use, they can't grow, and they can't produce, and they can't...
Well, that brings up a good point.
So anyway, I'm just saying they're not here tonight.
I know, but we had a little activity that a couple people were interested in putting up grow facilities or cultivation, and we said, well, you know, we don't know if this is really the right place for it, and we're going to put a moratorium on them so we could, because once they start the process, we can't deny them, so I think we need to really do that, because we haven't, we've been dragging our feet, and we talked about all this crap, and it doesn't get done, and I think that really needs to get done before we get into another situation, and we have no choices.
Well, and to that point, my recent experience with lawyers sort of shifted my perception about this whole special permitting, because before I met with these guys, I was thinking, well, when we write that into something, that means no, means no unless we say yes, and they were saying no, when someone comes into the town, they say, that says yes, all I have to do is go fulfill whatever they need me to fulfill, and then that's a yes. I have to just give them enough reason and enough, you know, I just have to meet their criteria, and that's a yes. So when we write this in, we have the perception that we're saying no, but when other people come in...
Are you talking about a special permit?
Yeah.
Right, I know.
They have the perception that it's a yes, they just have to run around and tick the boxes, so...
Well, can I just clarify something? You're talking about the general?
I'm talking about a general perception of the way laws are read and written.
Because the site plan review, which is what we're dealing with...
Right.
With the general, special permit, they haven't, we are not the special permitting for that, that's a ZBA.
I'm not talking about that in specifics, though, do you understand the points I'm making about...
Right, but what I want to say is, site plan review, I think, is acknowledged that if, if they do enough, then it's a yes. Special permit, I don't think that people assume that's a yes.
No, that's right.
No, the special...
I don't think they assume it's a no either, which is what you want, which maybe we want them...
No, I think...
But I just wanted to clarify there, the difference between special permit and...
I've heard what you said, but I don't, the way I look at special permit is that, you know, it's saying that we're open to listening to your proposal, and that, you know, we're going to take in all the factors that are in our bylaws, and then we're going to try to make a rational decision.
I get that, and I get that that's where our head is, but I'm just saying that there are other perceptions, and there are other ways that people are going to come at us.
Oh, and they do, and they do.
Right, and so I'm saying that I think the language we should use should be, I don't know, defensive, not defensive, but like protecting our town from someone coming in and saying, well, you, you met this precedent, you've already, you know, the precedent has been set, so why not build X, Y, and Z because of the precedent that you set, and we're going to decide that like our building is no better or worse than the thing that you've already approved, so why wouldn't you approve us?
Well, you know, and I get that point, too, but I think I go back to even a broader thing, we live in America, and that, you know, everybody has a certain amount of opportunities, you know, and that now you have to, local boards have to weigh in as to, you know, what are the, if you will, rights of the individual who wants to do something opposed to the rights of the individuals who are there who are opposed to it, and, you know, that's, that's a very difficult thing to do, because it goes right back to the same thing like I said about the solar thing, you know, some people like it, some people don't.
Right, but if we are careful in our language, then we get to decide, you know, we get to at some point, well, we get to some degree, limit what people perceive they are allowed to ask for.
Well, I guess...
I'd say they can ask for whatever they want, we can say no.
Yeah, but I know what she's saying, because attorney said that you just can't say no on a site plan review, if they can meet your criteria, but, or some of it, or the majority of it, I don't even know, but if there's one aspect that we say no, you're going to do this, or it just won't go, still we would have to sit down and try to negotiate with them, and I said, that doesn't make sense to me.
Well, we, one thing you got to remember, and there's, I think, Anne Mary's point was a little broader than just site plan review, but there's no mass laws about site plan review, I mean, you know, so, you know, the state as a general has kind of accepted that towns adopt site plan review, but there's no general law saying this, and so an applicant can argue that, hey, you know, I didn't break any laws, it's just, this is where Deerfield's in, and it gets back to what she says, it's arbitrary, you know, it's like, well, why do you say stuff like that? Now, now, if you, you don't want to have a McDonald's here, you better not have a let on in a meeting that you don't want McDonald's there, and that's why your law's that way, because they're going to be... Well, and that's, in a sense, what, you have to be careful how you do these things.
So if I could just remind people, when was it we went, we went through our use table? It was about three years ago?
Oh, logging, yeah.
Yeah, it was logging.
And I, we changed a lot of yeses to special permits to give us more say, just from what you were saying, and I don't think we changed many nos to special permit, you know, we kind of went back, like, but we didn't want to make yeses into nos, because sometimes there, you know, there is a good business that you do want there, so the special permit gives us more flexibility, but you're right, if we're not kind of asking the right questions about it, and we can't let people run over us, and again, some of the special permits are by the zoning board, and some are by us.
Well, that was the other thing, like, why give it away to the zoning board if it's a decision we want?
And that's, that's in our bylaws from, I don't know if we can change that, well, we can propose it, that we should be the special permitting agency unless...
Somebody said that you're going to have a place to go to appeal our decision.
That's what I think, I think I talked about that in terms of...
Well, no, it's a zoning board of appeals, right. The zoning board of appeals, and when you don't like their decision, you have to go to court, so I've always said that the planning board should be the first.
Make more decisions, and then they go there, then they go to court. So that could be something that we look at, actually.
And they have, they have more stringent, you have to get, like, you have to, it's not a simple majority for their, their...
Oh, is he more of a two-thirds or something? All right, good point, so let's put that in the minutes then, too, that we want to revisit the special permitting authority in town.
Okay, so you want to visit specials?
Revisit the...
Revisit...
Special permitting authority.
Special permitting. Because I understand special permitting, though, we can turn them down, we don't have to, we don't have to do any, you know, it's not like the...
Right, it has to be to the benefit of the town for us to say yes.
Right, right, so we have, we have, we have that no.
And speaking of which, the, most of the mail is special permits requests from Greenfield, I guess, so. And then the other thing we did get back was the ConCon saying that they reviewed the plans that we looked at last month about 198 Mill Village, and they have no changes.
198?
So, no change to the original order of conditions.
No changes?
Which is what we, not much knew, I was surprised.
To ConCon.
Anything else not previously known about, 248 hours ahead of time, anticipated? All right, so we said it was going to date for November 18th, 6 o'clock, and that's executive session.
So do we put down that as our next meeting, or do we put down the next one for December?
No, so we should put that one.
So November 18th, 6 o'clock?
Because we're going to say, we said we're going to talk executive session, and we're going to talk about marijuana bylaw.
Okay, so just put down 18, and no, put down December.
And actually, if we do make changes to the proposal, to the proposed bylaws, then we need two weeks to put it out there, so December 1st Tuesday, December might not be, might be too fast.
Right.
So we might actually have to have a later meeting in December.
December probably would, it would need to be the 9th or 16th.
Let's make it the 9th.
So for now, let's just put November 18th.
Okay, 6 p.m.
Because if we get something down on November 18th, that gives us two weeks easily, whereas...
No, it doesn't give us enough time to put a...
Not for the second, but for the ninth would.
Right, right, for the ninth would. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Oh.
Oh, a favor?
Aye.